And we will now consider action on closed session items. Mr. Burden.
Yes, Madam President. I move that the Board of Trustees accept the hearing officer's recommendation concerning the Level III Employee Grievance Appeal of Christina Carson.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burden and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Mr. Burden, did you have another one?
Yes, Madam President. I move to renew and award the probationary employment contracts of specified certified employees for the 2016-2017 contract year as provided under separate cover.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burden and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Please vote. Motion passes.
Last one. I move to renew and award the term employment contracts of specified certified employees for the 2016-2017 contract year as provided under separate cover.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burden and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Mrs. James.
I move to appoint Audra Udi to the position of Director of Student Leadership.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, ma'am. I move that the Board of Trustees assign the Level III DGBA Employee Grievance Appeal of Christopher Moore to Richard Hare Tower, who will serve as the Board's designated hearing officer under Board Policy DGBA Local.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rosenthal and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Did we get all our closed session items? Okay. Moving on to Board Member's Reports. Ms. Heliger, do you have our activity report?
I do, Madam President. For the month of June, our Board members have been extremely active and would like to say that they have been traveling as well. They have been participating in the National School Board Association Advocacy Institute in Washington DC. Thank you all for attending. Tasby Summer Leadership Institute, Ridge Point High School FFA banquet, Baines Middle School pop show, EDC meeting, Internal Audit Committee meetings, Heritage Roads Elementary Heritage Night, District 26 Education and Advisory Committee meetings, Fort Ben ISD, Baber Theater Awards, met with the finance team on school finance, attended all the high school graduations, presented class on internal audit at SLA, attended Fort Ben Chamber of Commerce Education Luncheon and presentation by Donna Behorich, Chair of State Board of Education, Community Partners Appreciation Luncheon, Principals Appreciation Reception, Kepner High School Baseball Playoff Game, gifted and talented mentorship programs, final project presentations.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Do we have any special reports?
Yes, Madam President. On Friday, June 10th, Board President Kristen Tasson, Trustee Grell James, Trustee Dave Rosenthal, and Superintendent Charles Dupree, and myself, and Dr. Whitbeck, were you there at the Chamber Luncheon? Well, it's the luncheon that Mrs. Behorich was at, State Board of Education, and she presented a very informative program on the mission of the State Board of Education and expressed her attempt to reach out to as many constituents as possible in order to create a dialogue and help prepare the State Board of Education for the task of promulgating testing procedures and other rules pertaining to the education of Texas public school children, which comprise fully 10% of all the schoolchildren in the United States. Testament to her outreach is Dr. Whitbeck's recent email informing our community stakeholders and teachers of the online survey Mrs. Behorich has put forth in order to get our opinions. And I'm happy to say that both Mr. Rosenthal and Dr. Dupree engaged Mrs. Behorich politely but strongly in how testing should move forward. They were looking out for our kids. Following that meeting, Mrs. Tasson, Mrs. James, and myself engaged with some Fort Ben ISD students who were in the audience in attendance to explain to them what Board of Trustees actually do and talked about school finance. And then on last Friday, June 17th, while attending Tasby Summer Leadership Institute in San Antonio, Mrs. Tasson, Mrs. James, Dr. Dupree, Greg Gibson, Cheyenne Rolfe, and myself made a presentation on the role of the Audit Committee, both in public education in general and at Fort Ben ISD. It was very well received and they loved us, so. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Tasson.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. James. They did love us, Mr. Rice. Thank you so much for that. I'll add another special report. As Ms. Heliger said, the trustees have been busy traveling this week. On June 12th and 13th, Mrs. Tasson, Mr. George, Dr. Dupree, and myself attended the Advocacy Institute in Washington DC, which is sponsored by the National Association of School Boards. And the institute educated us on federal education issues, including the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA, the IDEA reauthorization, and the need for reauthorization of the Healthy and Hunger-Free Kids Act. On Tuesday, June 14th, was our day to visit our legislators on Capitol Hill, and we visited Congressman Al Green in person, Congressman Pete Olson in person, and with the education aide in the office of Senator Ted Cruz. We had productive conversations where we shared facts and information particular to Fort Ben ISD and how pending legislation would impact our school district. We thanked our congressmen for their service and therefore their support of ESSA, and we also discussed appropriations options and prioritize and how to prioritize and ease the burden of the federal mandates on our local district. We emphasized to these legislators our vibrant and diverse learning community. We also had the chance that day to visit the White House and the Eisenhower Building in Washington DC, and we were hosted by a former Fort Ben ISD student, Kareem Farista. Kareem is a 2013 graduate of Clements High School from the Global Studies Academy, and we wish to thank him for his time and his generous hospitality.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Rosenthal.
Yes, I'd like to just follow up on Jim's comments about Donna Behorich. And I brought up earlier what I spoke to her about, and she was, I think, incredibly interested in that, and you know, the main overall topic was the breadth of the teaks. And that particular example, I think, really struck a chord where we're spending three weeks teaching 11-year-olds how to read credit reports and things like that when, you know, if you're talking about, you know, because she spent the first part, you know, or major part of it about closing gaps and whatnot, well, if you're really concerned about closing gaps, let's be relevant, you know, and let's get those kids that are struggling, let's get on the basics first before we teach them how to read credit reports. That, I know we all want our kids to be financially literate, but I mean, you know, let's make it real. And then teachers, of course, are asked to try to make that real with 11-year-olds. So, you know, so that's something that she was very interested in hearing, and I would urge everyone, especially teachers, to get on that survey, and I got on that survey today. I found it. And there's a 45-minute video that leads it off, but they don't make you watch it to go right to the survey, so. So that's a good thing. But I would urge staff, teachers, to get on there and express those concerns because I really think that she cares and I think that they're going to read them. So, and that, I'm telling you, she was really interested in hearing that message because it was a specific example and she got it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you for hosting that.
Okay, I think that concludes our Board Members' Reports. We're now moving on to our consent agenda, and I'm going to remove item 11A. Do any other Board members have anything else they would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Madam President, I move to approve the balance of the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes.
Madam President, I move to approve Consent Agenda, item 11A, as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have discussion? Do you want, Mr. Rosenthal?
Yeah, I think the initial part, what is it, section, oh, it's on page four.
Yes.
Under searches. That was the part that a couple of weeks ago I brought up, that I really wanted to think about that a little more. And I know a couple of us brought things up to the attention of Dr. Dupree and Rick Morris, and I see a couple different sides. I'm still a little uncomfortable with it, and I think that we really need to word smith this a little more to make sure that, just to make sure it's done right.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Ms. Heliger?
I'm also concerned still, and I think I've spoken with someone about this as well, is the, on page 15, the DAP placements with our K through 2, K through 2nd grade students. I'm still, based on the explanation that was given to us during the workshop, I'm still extremely apprehensive about placing our K through, we're really talking 5 through 7 year olds in DAP. And I understand that that's part, still part of the school setting, we're taking them out for 45 days, 5 through 7-year-olds. And, you know, I'll back up a little bit, and I think I said this the last time, but if I didn't, you know, I'm, for the most part, I'm really pleased with the changes that we are implementing in this document, because for whatever reason, I have a lot of experience with this document. But when it comes to K through, but when it comes to, seriously though, when it comes to K through 2nd graders, when it comes to the playing and the horse playing and those kinds of things, I mean, I will give a personal story where my child didn't go to DAP, but if he persisted, he would have gone to, when he was in kindergarten, when he was suspended for horse playing inside of the school. And I thought it was extremely excessive then, and based on how we conduct business here at Fort Ben ISD, those kinds of things can then end up a child in DAP based on excessiveness of that, especially when you're talking about a 5 or 6-year-old. So, I'm just really uncomfortable with us putting kids in DAP that's K through 2. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Mrs. James?
I would echo that. I'm pretty uncomfortable with that, too. Do we have any procedures written out or any thing defined behind that, behind those placements for the extra young kids?
Well, we have approval by the Director of Student Affairs, so that would be vetted by someone at a, with a neutral lens as opposed to from the campus. And, but in the K through 2, we also have a change in setting by placing elementary DAP, which is K 5 currently, at Lantern Lane Elementary. So it is a change of setting from, in the past, it's been at Emmar Wood or Frendale Henry.
So do we have any guidelines of how we are deciding on these placements? I mean, you're saying, yes, that the campus is looking at it and they're going to make a recommendation, and then the Department of Student Affairs is going to look at it and they're going to give their nod, but how, what's the flow? What's the criteria? What's, what are the markers we're looking for? What are the checks and balances we have in place to make sure this is really the last resort?
The students in K through 2 would be somewhat similar to students in K through 5 in that the campus has the, they have levels and they have the different offenses that a student might do, and then they have options, and some of those options are by law. But we also, I wanted to even point this out, this is a good opportunity, a segue, that we have a guide that, you know, the Board approves the Student Code of Conduct, which is kind of the driver for a lot of the details. And we have a guide that's produced each year and that is given to our administrators, and that helps them with some of those details. So if a child were to, you know, get into a fight, well, what are my options? If a child were to do such and such, what are my options? And those are all within the guide, depending on the level of the offense, level 1 or level 2 or a level 2 severe. And so they follow those, and there's really not any recommended change to those at this time. We can provide the Board maybe some more examples if that would help, if you needed to see, you know, some more specifics for what might occur at the schools.
So let me back this conversation down a little bit. So you've got, you're telling me you've got a guidebook, it looks like it's a half-inch thick of sort of the checks and balances, and we're approving this document, it's 37 pages long, and it seems to me in a lot of places to be a list of things. And I'm always nervous about lists because there's always something you leave off the list or you forget, or, and kids are creative and they come up with a new way to misbehave. I'm just saying, I'm not, okay. I guess I'm saying is, I don't know if it's possible, I know it's not possible for this round, but maybe there's a different way to go about this. I'm not sure what's exactly required. I asked Mr. Morris earlier, he said it is required for the Board to approve a Student Code of Conduct. I'd like to know what exactly is required. What are the components that have to be approved? Is it a philosophy? Is it a list? What is it? I'm not saying, obviously, that's not relevant so much to this decision this month, but I'd like to rethink how we're doing this, because when we're making a list, I think it's problematic. The second thing is, just to segue on to what Ms. Heliger was saying, I'm worried about what our, I guess I might be worried about what's in that booklet, if that's options for principals, maybe, maybe I'm worried about it, maybe I'm not. I guess I want to understand how, what guidelines are we putting in place to help our principals and our administrators to make the right decision about the student? And are students, are we thinking about them as people and as students and their holistic situation versus if they did this, then this happens, if they did this, then this happens? How are we looking at the whole child? And I, we talked about this before when we were talking about truancy, but I just feel like when I see a checklist or a list like this of all the things that can be done to the child, I get worried that, well, we haven't tried this one yet, so let's try that. I guess I just feel like, I'd like a different type of philosophy around this disciplining. I know we've put in the restorative discipline concept on the list, I appreciate that being at the top of the list, because I know that's something we're working towards. So, anyway, I think I've pretty much said my piece on that. I guess another area where I have some concern in this, and I brought, I believe I brought this up last time, and that's in the academic dishonesty category. This is a big area of student, this is a big, this is a problem area. And right now, I feel that the burden for this is coming, falling on the teachers to handle it and to make multiple versions of their tests and quizzes, and I don't think we're holding our students to the right level of accountability in terms of academic honesty. Certainly not in the way that they'll be held accountable if they're to go on to a college/university setting. So, I guess my other ask for this is, what are the procedures or what is the, what's the backup document behind the one sentence we have in here about academic dishonesty? And what are we asking our, what are we asking our staff to do about this? And how are we putting the burden of responsibility on the students?
We're very willing, and we've actually had some discussions about collaborating and bringing in some principals and some teachers, maybe some student leaders, to work on that this summer and to really hone in on academic dishonesty. We know that being honest is one of our seven competencies of a leader, and so we know that that's something that we want to continue to really emphasize with the students and with our new Director of Student Leadership, and as we look at, what do we really want to teach students about becoming leaders? We know that there's a great connection there to this topic. But as far as policy, we're in line with our policy, where I think that we've got to do the work is in the practice. Right now, like cheating, I'll say for the academic dishonesty is a level 1, and the consequence that is most commonly used is grade reduction. But as we've talked about, leadership team, we think that that probably looks different in our different schools, and we know that we need to really talk about that and help guide our principals so that we can do a better job of being somewhat consistent. Although the age of the child, the previous offenses, the nature of the item or the exam, or whether it's a simple paper, whether it's a major exam, those things are all, have to be looked at as factors. But we do know that there's work that needs to be done in this area, and so we're actually looking forward to, I think, really tightening and using that as a learning opportunity for us.
Excellent. So I'll bring it back to where we started, and that is on the search, the searches category, the searches page, which is, I guess, page 4 of this document. So could someone explain the, what we have in there now in this draft? What does it mean? What does it, what would it do as compared to what we have had in the past or other options that might be available?
Well, the current draft essentially has broad language to bear that says, upon probable suspicion, that we can search students' personal items, purses, backpacks, and the school-owned, if you will, less private areas, the lockers and desks. We received some guidance from our attorney, however, that that may be a little too restrictive and create some potential legal issues in the future. And so that's, this is an item we really want to get the Board's guidance on how to redraft this, on if we want to continue down this path or if we want to broaden it. My recommendation is that our principals need broader access to do searches, and that we would, at this point, given the new guidance given by the attorney, our recommendation is that we remove the words probable suspicion in relationship to lockers and desks.
I think it's reasonable suspicion.
Sorry, reasonable suspicion. Yes, sorry.
Well, I'll provide my opinion on that. You know, I think when I, when I look at this and read this, I believe that our teachers need to have, our principals, whether, need to have that type of leeway to do those searches. However, I think we need to have some proper procedures that are in place to document those searches. I kind of hone it in, you know, I liken it to, it's the school, school belongs to the public, and it's just like being home to me, you know? My kids get to rent the rooms, but I get to go in there and do what I need to do if I have some type of reasonable suspicion, suspicion on something. That's not something that I normally do on a regular basis, but it's something that I'm, if I have reason to or cause to. But in this setting, with the school setting, I think we need to have some procedures in place to let us document the reason, the why, those kinds of things, to kind of cover the reasons why we went into that student's locker. So that's what I would like to see, still give those principals the authority to do that search.
Mr. Rosenthal? Is your light on?
It is, but that's in my piece.
Okay. Mr. Burden?
So what if we, what if we say that the lockers are ours as a district and you can use them, but they are not your personal property? How does that, how does that come into play? Mr. Morris?
Well...
Certain lockers are certainly the property of the district. If you make clear, though, that students who use lockers don't have an expectation of privacy within those lockers, then that affords your district administrators and campus administrators the tool to conduct random searches as they may feel necessary for reasons of safety or protection of students.
Mrs. James?
All right, and I think I'm, I think I understand what you're saying, Mr. Morris, and then I would add what Ms. Heliger says, if we're going to go that route, we need to have some, I guess, documentation procedures in place for that type of thing. Is that, do those things, can those things work, can that work, those two things work together, or are they mutually exclusive?
I don't know that you necessarily need more procedures to eliminate the expectation of privacy that students might otherwise have in areas like lockers or desks. For purposes of this Student Code of Conduct, I just think you need a pronouncement to that effect.
Well, I think the question, I think the question is, so if we decide we're going to go that policy route and say we're going to remove the expectation of privacy in lockers and desks, not in purses and backpacks, because we still have the reasonable suspicion in that area and they cannot be searched without reasonable suspicion. But if we remove the expectation of privacy in desks and lockers by not putting reasonable suspicion in front of, you know, the being able to search those, then I think what Ms. Heliger is saying and what Mrs. James is saying is that we would like to see some procedures by the administration around, or some guidelines or some procedures around, when can those lock, the lockers be blanket searched or randomly searched? And when, maybe some district procedures underneath that policy that tell us or tell the community when something like that might happen. And I think Mrs. James's question is, is that reasonable to, I mean, can those two exist together? Can we say we're removing the expectation of privacy, however, here are our district procedures on searches?
It depends on how you craft those procedures, but irrespective of how you craft them, I think they should be handled offline or separately from the Student Code of Conduct. The Student Code of Conduct is intended to give notice to parents and students about the extent of your search policy. But you may want to have procedures, for instance, you may want administrators to track if they conduct a random search of lockers. Which lockers did they search? Did they yield anything? That might be important administratively for an accountability piece in ensuring that those things are conducted well, but I would not include that in the Student Code of Conduct. If your procedures signal too much about how you will conduct random searches, well... If your procedures signal too much about how you will conduct random searches, well, you could draft a procedure.
They're no longer random.
They're no longer random. That's right. So I think it does come down to what it is you would expect to do within those procedures.
So my thought was really around the document, I mean, of course, the documentation of that, so, and accountability to the community, because if you check my locker five times this week, I want to know why you're checking my locker five times this week. Are we profiling, are you profiling me? I mean, what is really going on? So there needs to be some documentation there, underlying documentation that after the search is done, you know, and like you said, that's maybe administratively, but we don't have to include it in this student code of conduct, but definitely I think we need to see those type of documentation.
And actually, there is a policy that also relates to searches, so it would be a natural extension of that policy to write a procedure that would also align with what's in the student code of conduct.
Okay. And I have one more thing that we kind of got on to that, but I wanted to go back to the K through, through second grade, only because one of the concerns that I have with DAP is making sure that we're serving the student properly within DAP. And so one of my also concerns is that if you've got a child, K through, K through two, that's not, let me go back, you gave me seven, seven examples last week, you didn't go through all of them, but you kind of did some generality about those examples, and five of them I thought were pretty, what's the word I want to say here? Weak, okay? And two of them were pretty, you know, egregious, you know, the kind of thing that we definitely want to get the child some support. So then the question is, how do we truly support that child within a DAP program? Because to me, that's really what our concern is, is making sure that we put them in the right environment in order for them to go back, you know, if that's the case, go back to the school system, prepare to, and learn how to behave a certain way. And I think when you talk about K through two, that's also including the parent as well. That's not something that, you know, I'm just going to put the child in a 30 to 45 day program and they've got it, not with a K through, K through two. I just don't see that. I think that's a lot more support that's needed at that age. So, that's it. Thank you.
So, we have a motion on the, we have a motion to approve agenda item 11A, and it sounds to me like this is something that needs to be tabled perhaps. So, Mr. Rice, I guess, Mr. Morris, do we need to withdraw the motion or do we need to amend it?
We don't amend it.
You're not on.
We maybe just need to make a motion to table it.
I think that is appropriate to make a motion to table it, and so that we can work with the administration, craft some language around the search issue that is consistent with what I think the consensus sentiments of the board are.
I'll move to table the motion until the next regular board meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote.
I know, that's why I asked the question.
So we still had a motion on the floor to approve the item, which is why I asked the question.
Well, once it's tabled, it just carries over to the next regular board meeting.
Okay. Motion passes.
So then we'll have a revised version and we'll make a motion to adopt the revised
Moving on to item 12, our action items. 12A is consideration, to consider approval of the budget, the 2016-17 budget. Ms. Heliger?
Yes, I moved that the board adopt the 2016-2017 budget as presented with a general operation fund budget of $592,626,411, a food service budget of $28,227,562, and a debt service budget of $96,504,163, for a total budget of $717,358,136.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Heliger and a second by Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have discussion?
Yes.
Ms. Heliger.
Mr. Bassett, could you kind of just give us a brief, refresh my memory concerning any pay raises that we're giving for this year?
Yes, ma'am. So the only raises we've recommended for the year are for the teachers to receive the step. The cost of that is 2.5 million. So just to refresh everybody's memory, we really were taking a cautious tone and a cautious approach with this year's budget. At the time when we were developing everything, we didn't know what was going to happen with the school funding lawsuit, so we wanted to approach it as if nothing good was going to happen, and that has served us well because we didn't have a positive outcome of that lawsuit. The one thing that we showed the board just a few times is that there's a distinct possibility that the state could have less revenue in the next biennium. Matter of fact, when we were visiting with our representative, Rick Miller, today, he mentioned the possibility of a gap as wide as $9 billion in terms of less revenue for the state. And so because the oil hasn't recovered, what we are looking at is the possibility of a cut in state revenue in future years. And so we're trying to be very cautious with the expenses that we add to the budget, and having a general salary increase is, you know, again, the salary increase is the gift that keeps on giving. 1% would equate to $4.1 million. And so that's why a general raise isn't included in the budget. I'm holding out hope that we'd be able to do something on, from a retention supplement perspective. We'll have a better idea next month after the results for the year finalize and after we get our certified values in. And so if that's the case, we'd be bringing something in August.
Okay, so we did, we did the step, and that, the step was to align ourselves with some of our competitive, our neighboring districts when it comes to salaries? So that's why we decided to do that, right?
Well, the step just allows the teachers to move up the step, to get the, most of the steps are $500, so most, so almost all the teachers would be getting a $500 raise, including the teachers that are over the 25 years that we publish. And so it's, but it's not moving the scale, it's just keeping the scale as is.
And last year, last year, what did we do last year?
Last year, we gave a 2% general, general raise.
To everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this year, so it sounds like we're not doing that only for the teachers, and so we're hoping that paraprofessionals and those, and other groups that we're able to possibly give some type of retention bonus?
Yeah, retention supplement, that's right. That's, that's something that the district's done before in the past, and the good thing about that is that it's just one time. It's not something that adds, you know, to the budget in the following year, okay? And so if we're able to, you know, identify those funds, we'll be bringing an amendment to the board in August.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Mr. Rice?
No.
Ms. James?
Well, just piggyback on what you said, Ms. Heliger, I think that's a good idea to consider that for paraprofessionals, especially because they're, you know, their wages are hard to live on. So thank you for considering that. I also have a question about our cost per student. I asked you this a little bit earlier, or earlier today, or last week, or over the weekend. Our, our cost per student is increasing slightly, and our revenue per student is decreasing slightly. Do you have any numbers, some numbers behind that?
Yes, ma'am. The, the cost per student is going up by $41, and so that equates to less than half a percent that our cost per student is increasing.
So what's the cost per student last year and this year? Do you know?
Oh, yes.
The delta's $41.
Yeah, the delta's $41. The, this year, our budget would be $7,945 per student. Last year, it was 79.04.
All right. And then what about the difference in revenue?
The revenue is, is a 1.7% decrease per student. I don't have those numbers handy, I could get those to you.
Okay, so that would be interesting to know, because when we can speak to our legislators and say, from one year to the next, we lost X dollars per student, and we had 1,000 more students.
No, exactly.
There's a multiplier there, and then that helps quantify for folks what were the real impact to these fluctuating state budgets.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I think the best gee whiz number in that regard is that the state's share of our budget is going down from 44% in the current year, down to 37%, you know, so full 7% change.
Right. And when I started on the school board, it was something like 54, 46, I think, and now we're 10 points, 10 points different. It might have even been 52, 48. So we're definitely not headed in the right direction on that, and being a residential property-based district, we don't have, a great deal of our tax base is resident properties, then that falls, burden falls on our families. And if they really realized how much of the money that they, how much of the burden is really falling on them, they would, they might be louder when they spoke to their legislators. So that would be a message I'd really like to be able to get out this fall, so we can, you know, just help people to understand that, so we can help our state legislatures, legislature make some changes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then I have one other question. So in adopting this budget, we're doing that under the assumption of a 28 cent, when we adopt the debt service budget, we're adopting that on the assumption of a 28 cent tax rate for the debt service fund. We discussed two weeks ago that we might not be able to actually adopt that 28 cent tax rate come September. We might choose to do that a little bit differently. So what would have to happen if we adopt this budget now at the 28 cent? What happens if we adopt a tax rate different from the one that this budget's based on?
Yes, ma'am. If we, if, if we choose to adopt a rate where we're at, at the 30 pennies, what we would need to do is republish in the paper a different truth and taxation calculation. We would restructure the debt so that we'd be paying off between 6 and 7 million dollars of debt early with the remarketing that we're going to have. And then we'd have to have another public hearing like we had on, earlier this month, and then the rates would be adopted in September.
All right, thank you. That would be, that'll be an important community conversation for us to have to figure out the best path forward, I guess, board conversation for us to figure out the best path forward and then help the community to understand. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Are we ready to vote? Motion passes. Now considering item, item 12B, approval of low, of low attendance waivers and missed instructional day waivers. Can I get a motion?
I move to approve item 12B as presented.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. Motion passes. Item 12C, considering approval of the selection of Texas Association of School Boards and Gibson Consulting Group to perform financial and operational audits.
I move to approve item 12C as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Burdine. Mr. Rice?
Thank you, Madam President. This is to renew a contract already in place that the board approved in, on December 9th of 2013, and the board approved the use of Tasby Gibson Consulting in one-year increments for up to five years. And this, we're in our second year, and so we're asking the board to approve renewal of this agreement for the first of four more possible renewals. And the agreement is drafted to effectuate all services provided by Gibson Consulting from January of this year through December 31st of this year.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Do we have additional discussion?
Ms. Tassin, I just want to point out one item. In the finalization of the draft, we've taken the new end of the term date through the end of June, and we did that for reasons that if you ever terminate your relationship with Gibson, the termination date in the middle of December would likely mean that they were in the middle of a performance of an audit. So we thought that that would be best to put them on a different timetable for the end of the term of the contract. So this, this renewal will take it through as opposed to December of this year through June of the following year.
Thank you, Mr. Morris, for pointing that out. Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes, I like Gibson's work, I just wanted to say that. I think they present very clear and concise reports to us. But I have a question, is why is, what's the association with Tasby? They're procured through the Tasby Buy Board Cooperative Purchasing Agreement. Okay, okay. Thank you.
Mrs. James?
And, Mr. Rice, on this item, we don't have an amount in here for, for, an amount for the contract for services expected for the coming year? Is that correct?
Yes, it's unlimited. Just kidding. I don't, I don't, I don't recall what the amount is, but it's around 300,000.
All right, and that's...
Let me speak to that issue. That is the general budgeted amount that the board sets aside, I believe, for the audits. This is for renewal of the master agreement. The master agreement provides that they cannot commence work unless you direct a particular audit, and then they come back to you with a cost proposal for that audit, and then the board approves the cost proposal for the particular audit work.
All right, so we haven't, we haven't, have we approved the cost proposal from them? I know we've talked about it.
You have for each of the audits that you have ordered as a board, and you would in the future.
Okay, but how about for this coming, upcoming year, the 16, 17?
I think you have identified audit priorities for the upcoming year, but I don't know that you have made a request of Gibson to provide a proposal for all those audits that you've identified for the upcoming year.
All right, so that would be, go ahead.
Yes, we have. I don't have that in front of me. I'll try to do better next time.
Oh, okay, I just was, what I was trying to understand, Mr. Rice, I know I've seen it too, because we've talked about it in the audit committee, but I didn't know if that was something that would be coming to the board for approval, or if that is approved by the audit committee, or what the process is.
I'll have to ask Mr. Morris for his opinion on that.
The process would be that the audit committee would make a recommendation on a per-proposal basis for the board's approval.
This, this is actually written in a way, I mean, did you read this recommendation? Because this appears to authorize the committee to engage for these specific audits, but it does not include a dollar amount.
But I thought that, that's kind of what I'm asking Dr. Dupree, because it seems confusing. Are these the audits over the next three additional years, or that, because these are the audits I think we're planning for this year.
And that's not what the contract is supposed to cover. It's supposed to be the master services agreement... It's supposed to be, the master services agreement is what's, we're supposed to be approving.
That, that's right. All, all it approves is Gibson, uh, the master agreement with Gibson with the contemplation that Gibson will perform these audits, but before Gibson commences these audits, uh, as provided in the master agreement, they have to provide a cost proposal for each that will be approved by the board.
For each individually or as a group? It could be done as a group?
Well, you could ask them to do it as a group, but generally, in the past, they have done it on a per audit proposal basis.
Ms. Heliger?
Because I was trying to get some clarity about master service agreement, you know, I'm used to a, a master service agreement just being that, a kind of a blanket type of agreement, that as we do business, we, we, you might set specific type of rates inside of that master service agreement. You set, you know, um, you know, certain, certain criteria, whatnot, and so when we have these three audits that are there, um, and, and no cost associated, no anything like that, I'm kind of just, you know, what, what the going rate, at least the rate, you know, hourly rate that we are agreeing to, or are we just saying, you know, we just, are we really just agreeing upon that we're gonna be using them for an audit over the, to do our audits over the next four years? And if that's the case, then I don't think we need to be doing this every year. If it's a blanket, just simple, we've got a contract with them um for five years, you know, for them to have the ability to do contracts with us, to do audits with us, that's a very simple contract to me, a master, master service agreement.
Well, essentially.
Let me, let me answer that question, Mrs. Heiliger. We have procured this contract through the Tasby Byboard, they wrote the RFQ, or we availed ourselves of, of them. So all of the uh, all of the hourly rates have already been published, and what we're doing now is renewing the contract that we, we need to do for, for, I guess, from, from now until summer of, of next year. Because their work, we're doing it, we're changing the contract date, so instead of ending in December, which is just roughly six months away, it'll end in June of next year, twelve months away, because they have several audits that we have asked them to do. So when we approve this, if we approve this tonight, that will legally allow the audit committee to move forward with procuring cost estimates or proposals from Gibson to perform these uh other audits that we've asked them to perform. And we'll have to make sure that when we add all of those up, they do not exceed the budgeted amount that we have asked Dr. Dupree and Mr. Bassett to include in our annual operating budget. And at such time that I have that information, I will present it to the board for your review and approval, if that is an appropriate thing to do. So then you will see what the cost for each audit is.
Okay, that gives some clarity, because I think if we already have a document that has what their normal rate is, that kind of stuff, so then when they're proposing to us is that if we want them to do an audit on HR, for example, then, Kermit looks up. If we wanna do, then they'll, then they'll do, you know, they'll say it's gonna be twenty hours or thirty hours, and then we use that rate to come up with our budget. Okay, that's fair enough.
Okay, please vote. Motion passes. Moving on to item thirteen, review of future board meeting agenda items. Dr. Dupree?
Well, the items listed are, appear to be relatively light, just because they're not inclusive of all the purchasing items. There are a lot of purchasing items that are gonna come the next couple of months, but we wanted to kind of feature the main items. There's several bond, um, construction items that are gonna come forward in July and in August. We've talked about the superintendent evaluation instrument that would be moved out to August. On July fifth, twenty-fifth, excuse me, July twenty-fifth, we'll do the um quarterly superintendent for, formative evaluation discussion. And as you heard earlier, we'll be bringing forth um star performance and IR school data updates in August as well, in addition to a truancy update. And then some, you'll also notice in August, we're gonna resume the policy, um, the policy reviews, beginning with EG Local, and then we'll be giving you an updated schedule, since we've kind of skipped a couple of months this summer, to kind of build out for the rest of the year what that'll look like. Are there any other, at this point, any questions, feedback?
Mr. Rice, did you have anything?
I'm sorry.
Okay, it's okay. Ms. Heliger? Nope? Okay, I think we're ready to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Heliger and a second by Ms. James, all in favor. Say aye. Thank you.